Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special called meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, August 31st. If you'll please rise, Chief Lonzo Wallace from Temple Fire and Rescue will lead us in the invocation and then Bruce Butcher of Public Works will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Chief?
Bow your heads with me, please. Fathers, we come to you this evening to come to you thanking you for the meaning and blessings you've bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather here today to take care of the business that you have set before us. Lord, we want to thank you for this great country that we live in. Lord, we want to thank you for the great citizens that we have here in this city. Thank you, Lord, we'd like for you to, like, thank you for the soldiers that we have and those that are protecting us, protecting our freedoms here and abroad. Lord, we just ask you to give us the guidance and the strength to take care of the business that you would have us to do. Give a special blessing to those that are making those decisions so that they may be guided in the right directions to do those things you would have us to do. Rest all these hands in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Chief.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Welcome to everyone to this meeting, we appreciate your attendance tonight and we've got an agenda pretty well focused on, on our budget and tax rates for the coming year. The first item under that heading is item three, is public hearing. Conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution adopting the city's budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2006 and ending September 30th of 2007, including the operating budget for 2006, 2007, and fiscal and investment policies. Mr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we have several series of PowerPoint slides, I'll try to go through those fairly quickly, most of these counsel have seen before and is familiar with, so I won't spend a lot of time on any of the slides unless you'd like to stop and pause as we go through them. Adopting your budget, of course, state law requires municipalities to adopt the budget before they adopt the tax rate. You also will be considering adopting a capital improvement plan, the '06, 2006 to 2016 capital improvement plan, adopting the tax role and adopting a tax rate and all of those actions are for you tonight. Let's go to the next slide. Key remaining dates, there's one key remaining date, that's this evening with regard to your budget and tax rate and a couple of other items that we just mentioned. General priorities in our operating and maintenance budget this year, we've gone over those also, but phase two, the compensation benefits plan recommendations, implementation of those is embedded within your FY '06, '07 budget. Addressing increased fuel costs, costs in utilities, and then maintaining our current programs and service levels, all of those were priorities in the formulation of the budget that you see before you. Next slide, give you a quick overview, pie chart there just represents our expenditures by fund. You can see the general fund, of course, is the majority fund, fifty-six percent, about eighty-eight million, a little less than eighty-nine or a little more than eighty-eight million dollars for total of all funds. Water and sewers your next largest fund at twenty-six percent of your expenditures. Focus just for a moment on the general fund, that's the schedule of adjustments after the filing of the proposed budget. First column that you see up there is the filed copy of the preliminary budget that you were given back in June, or the end of June, and then as of today, the adjustments that have been made, and we've gone over those before. The next slide kind of gives you a little bit more detail relating to that, but those are the changes or explanation of changes from the filed budget to the proposed budget. Again, I won't go through all of those in any detail unless counsel would like to have some more discussion or explanation about those. In terms of your revenues, next slide, please, general fund revenues and sources. Total revenues about forty-eight million, a little over forty-eight and a half million dollars. The general fund revenue sources, of course, our primary revenue source for the general fund is not property taxes, but sales tax. Property tax is second, and then you can see the other levels or revenue sources that are identified. Now with your expenditures, we are a service-based organization and as a result, the majority of your expenditures are in personnel and personnel-related costs, a little over sixty percent, and then thirty-three percent in operations, but that makes up the total expenditures. Your water and wastewater fund, again, your second largest fund and also one of significance for us, obviously. Again, this chart shows you the changes between the filed copy of the preliminary budget and proposed, and you'll note that there are... Those are the next slide, if you go to the next slide, you can see the explanation of the revenue changes, lowered slightly as a result of the final cost of service study that we did over the course of the summer, and then expense changes that were associated with that also. Next slide, debt service, and again, a similar schedule showing changes resulting from the filed preliminary and again, very minor change as a result of that. Finally, other funds, proposed annual budget for all other funds, hotel, motel tax fund, our federal state grant fund, drainage fund, reinvestment fund, reinvestment zone number one fund, and I'm not going to spend much time on that slide because all of those numbers are the same as what was filed on June 30th, there were no changes associated with that. And that's the last slide I was going to go over in regard to that, I'd like to turn it over now to Tracy and she'll address the fiscal and investment policies that form the basis for budget.
Thank you, David. Also included in the adoption of our annual budget includes our fiscal and budgetary policies. The broad purpose of the fiscal and budgetary policy statement is to enable the city to achieve and maintain a long-term, stable, and positive financial condition. There's no changes proposed this year versus what was in the budget last year. Just briefly, quickly go over what this policy includes, it includes our operating budget policies related to that, revenue expenditure policies, capital budget program, accounting auditing and financial reporting, on through to debt management, this is, also includes our debt policy. Policies related to our financial condition, reserves and stability ratios, internal controls, and staffing and training within the finance department. We also have our investment policy overview, there's no proposed changes from the policy from last year. Quickly, the objectives of our investment policy is safety, liquidity, and yield in that order, and it also outlines our reporting, mark-to-market monthly, including quarterly presentations to council. That concludes my slides, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And again, just as a, sorry, again, just as a refresher, this item does require a public hearing and state law requires us to adopt a budget in advance of considering the tax rate that would support that budget, so that's the steps in the process. Be happy to address any questions, Mr. Blackburn.
Thanks, Blackburn, Ms. Bernard. Counsel, any questions that you have for staff before we go to the public hearing? There being none, this item does require a public hearing and I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. If you wish to address counsel, ask any questions, make a statement, please come forward, state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. And I would just like to say that this budget includes an increase in water and wastewater and solid waste rates, and this would be the appropriate time, if there are any comments that you'd like to make on those items, it would be certainly appropriate to make your comments during this part of the public hearing as well. Anyone wishing to speak on the budget?
I have a question.
If you come to the microphone, please, sir, state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Anderson, and I've been a resident of Temple coming up to six years.
If you just state your address for us.
And I live, my resident is the Omega Homes at 2412 Crystal Drive.
Okay.
And I was in... I had a question, but it came off the top of my head and I can't see it really. Would you give me a, just bypass this and we'll come back to it another time, or I'll just write it down on a piece of paper and submit it at the end of the meeting?
That's just fine.
It evades me because I've got so many things going through my head right now.
Not a problem at all.
I'm sorry about this.
Okay, all right, glad to hear it, thank you very much, any time we can address a question, don't hesitate to ask, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, your pleasure on this side, this resolution to, for the city budget.
I'd like to make a comment, is that all right?
Absolutely, please, please.
I had several folks call from my district expressing concerns about different things, increases, and parks was singled out several times and different things, and so I thought, I wanted to do a little bit of research and give a little bit of perspective on why some of the increases are what they are and what goes. And the parks budget is increasing $177,000 over last year, and I think it's interesting when you look at that, that of that $177,000 increase, that $100,000 is for electricity. I mean, keeping the buildings and keeping those things, all the things that maintain the buildings and the facilities, $10,000 of that is for fuel. And so it's not like there's just more programs and more staff and all these things that are going on, we're in a maintaining mode in this budget, you're not seeing a lot of things added and a lot of all these, it's maintaining what we have. And I also, I thought it would be interesting for the citizens to know, just a few statistics, the Parks Department, and I'm just, I mentioned Parks, all the departments are doing more with less and trying to make, stretch things, but like the Parks Department, they, they mow and maintain 200 linear miles of right-of-way. And if you, to put that in perspective, that's a trip to Houston by mowing and the right-of-way. They maintain all of our medians and overpasses, they maintain 650 acres of parks, they maintain the grounds of thirty buildings outside this building and I think they do a great job maintaining those. They mowed 1,200 vacant lots last year, 1,200 vacant lots. And I guess why I bring that up is, is all of our departments, they all requested and asked for more things, trying to continue to take things up, but our city manager got with them, they got the budget where it is, and it's a, it's a budget that is in a maintenance thing, maintaining where we're at, trying to maintain our facilities, but the increases that came, it's, it's trying to do with what we have, and it's, the parks do a great job, all of our departments do a great job of managing those dollars, so I thought it was just, it'd be interesting, and for, if there are other questions, there's a statistical data sheet that's really interesting, you can request from the city that will give you information on what all the departments do and what they maintain and those things, but I just thought that would be, it was interesting for the people to know.
It is good, thank you for doing that. Any other comments from counsel, otherwise entertain a motion on approval or comment on the budget for 2006, 2007?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, we'll sit for the discussion by the council. There being none, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Prochentaro?
Aye.
Counselor number Lina?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Next item is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the adoption of the 2006 to 2016 capital improvement plan. Mr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor, you have also before you tonight item four, which is our CIP plan for 2006 to 2016. Just some quick comments on it, these are very significant CIP proposals and your, combined with your '06, '07 budget. I've made the comment in several forums and in several places that I believe in terms of a package, it may be one of the most significant packages of CIP programs that we've ever considered. Historic is worth it, you've said several times. Your total capital recommended CIP list and operating budget, eighty-five, a little over eighty-five million dollars. Of course, your CIP work is multi-layered and multi-year, and I'll touch on that here in just a second also. You see on the, also in your recommendations and in the plan that there are actually five categories or five areas in the plan. The first is certificates of obligation funded projects, and these are broken down by the way we would propose or the way I propose funding these items. The projects themselves span all of our municipal areas in one way, shape, form, or fashion, but by funding category, there are certificates of obligation, utility revenue funded projects, general obligation funded projects, and those general obligation funded projects, of course, will require approval of the voters. The plan that you have before you tonight is simply that, it is a plan and a list of projects that provide us with some direction and an intent to proceed and allow us to proceed, but the geo-funded projects will certainly require voter approval. Then there are also special revenue funded projects, and then about 153 million in what I've entitled the future consideration projects. These are projects that are not necessarily identified for current funding, but we certainly want to get onto the project list. We've recommended dividing those projects up into two fiscal years and the debt issuances for both funding and administrative management purposes. As I mentioned a moment ago, there are multiple projects on these lists. From an administrative standpoint, it's also advantageous to break those up so that we can hopefully better manage those projects and better manage them to completion in an efficient way. The proposed '07 projects include about $10 million in certificate of obligation projects and about twenty, a little less than 21 million in water and sewer revenue bond, or that's the utility revenue bond projects, and then about 400,000 or a little less than half a million, for a total of about 31 million in the FY '06, '07 year. Also proposed in the project plan or in the CIP plan that you have are projects to be funded in the FY '08, which would be the '07, '08 budget here. That's the remaining or the other column in your, on your CIP project list, the, or the document that you received. It had all of the projects identified and then two columns, FY '06, '07, and FY '07, '08. These are the '08 projects, or at least the totals for those projects, and we'd recommend that you look at them or consider them in that manner. I'd be happy to go over any other questions that you might have relative to your CIP list, summary of the projects, or any other detail that you'd like to hear in regard to that. Counsel has invested, I think, a substantial amount of time over the past several weeks looking at your CIP projects and CIP list, and I want to thank you for the time and energy that you all have invested in that process. It is a very important part of what we're going to be doing and what we're about to be doing over the next several years, so I want to thank you for your investment in that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Counsel?
No, but I would like to take the moment and thank the staff, each and every one of you, if you're reading the meter or looking at the money in the city, I want to thank each and every one of you for your input, for your care for your city, and the other thing is, care for your fellow citizen. I feel as though I've had several phone calls about the CIP and thanking, you know, I kind of carried a banner for Baker Park because once you went over there and saw it, I really felt as though that, you know, that's a real impression for our community, our park department. And so I just want to say personally, thank you, thank you to David, Mr. Blackburn, Tracy Bernard, Jonathan Graham, and Plaidette, because it's, this isn't an easy task, so I just want to say thanks.
Other comments by counsel, otherwise this item requires action and I'll entertain a motion for action on item four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to consider a motion to authorize the adoption of the 2006 to 2016 capital improvement plan, is there any further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Prochentaro?
Aye.
Counselor number Lina?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Next item is item five, and we're going to take item five and six read together, but then we're going to have to take separate quotes on them, and as one of you chooses to make a motion on these items, the motion needs to be made exactly as it is stated on your agenda, so if you make that motion, if you will please, please read that as it is, it is written, so.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to explain to the citizens of why we have to make the motion that way.
Okay, because of state law that basically states exactly what we have to read into the record and exactly how it has to be stated for the, for the truth in taxation laws for the state of Texas, so thank you for that. So I'm going to read item five first and then item six, and then we'll, we'll take those presentations by Ms. Bernard. First and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving the tax role and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city for the tax year 2006 to be considered on an emergency basis. Item six is the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance levying taxes and setting a tax rate for the city for the tax year of 2006, making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city to be considered on an emergency basis. Ms. Bernard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Beginning with our tax role, our certified role by the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County is $2,742,289,947. The tax, the composition of that taxable value is divided into two components. The first, 2.6 billion relates to the city of Temple, and the 119 million relates to specifically the reinvestment zone, and the total taxable value of 2.7 billion. Just the composition of our tax base, approximately 42% of its single family, 37% commercial industrial utilities, and 12.4% of the total market value is exempt from taxes total. The proposed tax rate and levy, the FY 2007 proposed tax rate is 57.34 cents per $100 valuation. Again, that's two components, one being the maintenance and operation component of 33.95 cents, and the interest in sinking, which is for our tax-supported debt obligations of the city of 23.39 cents per $100 valuation. Our proposed tax rate compared to our effective tax rate is 2.98% above the effective tax rate. Our effective, our tax rate, proposed tax rate compared to last year's tax rate, 57.34 to 57.45 is a decrease of less than one cent. Applying our tax rate of 57.34 to a $100,000 home, if there was no change in your taxable value, your annual taxes would decrease by a dollar and 10 cents. If there was an increase, which was the average increase in taxable residential values of 3.51%, your total annual taxes would increase by $19.03. Applying our tax rate to the tax role, our total levy is $14,961,000 for FY 2007, and then 685,000 for, 685,136 for the reinvestment zone, and the total tax levy of 14.9 million is divided into three, or two components, the INS and the M and O, and then this was the first year of our frozen values and taxes, and we add back that frozen taxes of 1.3 million. How does the city of Temple's tax rate compare to the region and other peer cities? As you can see, city of Temple's is the purple bar, and they're below the median of our peer cities and cities within our region. Again, the required actions before we adopted the budget, we adopt the public hearing on the adopt the tax role, the public hearing on adopt the tax rate. That concludes my slides, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Counsel, are there any questions for staff? There being no questions, these two items require a public hearing, we can take both of them together in a public hearing, and so if you wish to speak on either the tax role or the tax rate, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, if you appear to make a motion again, if you'll please read them individually, we have to consider them separately. Somebody make a motion for number one.
I move that property taxes be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 57.34 cents per $100 valuation.
Thank you, Counselor number Lina, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Prochentaro?
Aye.
Counselor number Lina?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Second motion.
I move that the ordinance setting the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven tax rate for the city of Temple be adopted.
Thank you, Counsel, member Jeter. We have a motion.
Second.
A second. Further discussion?
Aye.
Mayor Prochatawala?
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item on our agenda is to consider adopting a resolution setting the collection charges for solid waste services. Mr. Butcher, I, please present that one to me.
Mayor Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
If you need an option on item five as well, with the, out of six, the two separate motions, if you need to put a separate motion, you can vote on item five.
Oh, thank you. I thought they'd covered it. Thank you for the correct, excuse me, okay, then those two were for item six, so we need a motion on item five, which is to consider adopting an ordinance approving the tax rule and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all of the real and personal property in the city of Temple for the tax year two thousand and six to be considered on an emergency basis. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. No question.
Further discussion? Madam Secretary.
Counselor Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Prochatawala?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
And I also understood, I misunderstood that also.
It's confusing. Thank you, sir.
It is confusing.
Mr. Butcher, on item seven, solid waste.
Good evening. What you have before you this evening is a resolution to consider adopting and setting the collection charges for solid waste. This addresses both current operations and changes to the brush and bulky program, which were approved in June, on June fifteenth of this year. The changes to current operation charges are a proposed dollar-ten increase in residential services and a five percent increase in commercial services. The changes due to the brush and bulky program modifications are out-of-cycle and mixed collection, sixty-five dollars for six cubic yard collection, over-limit collection, sixty-five dollars per six cubic yard collection, and that would be after the first six cubic yards is, which is already included in the residential fee. Prohibited items, demolition and remodeling, three hundred dollars for twenty cubic yard collection, tires collected from curbside, ten dollars, fifteen dollars, and fifty-five dollars. The result of this, as far as current operations are, the residential solid waste fee would go to thirteen dollars and thirty cents per month. Commercial fees, commercial pickup fees would have a five percent increase, as I said earlier, and basically, those are the, those are the charges and that you have before you for approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher. Could you remind me, on the tires collected, the, the three different fees for?
That's based on tire rim size.
Okay. Okay, so it's not a volume quantity, it's, it's a size of tire?
No, no, it's, up to seventeen inch rim is ten dollars, from eighteen to twenty-two point five inch rim is fifteen, and over twenty-two point five inch rim is thirty-five.
Okay.
Third tire?
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, are there questions for Mr. Butcher? Mr. Blackburn?
I'm just going to add a couple of quick comments relative to that. The, the increases in our solid wa, waste rates that are proposed are due primarily, I think, to two primary factors. One of those is just the increased cost of doing business for solid waste and primarily fuel cost. Our number one consumer of fuel in the city in terms of our service, our city departments is solid waste, so it's a very, very large expense item, of course. Combine that with a desire to try and maintain current service levels, in other words, not adjust service levels.
Correct.
Correct. Not adjusting those service levels, then that, again, is, is the primary indicators. It also has to do with our city, in other words, we have more places to pick up now, which has another, of course, there's revenue associated with that, but there's also expenses associated with that. So, those are the primary adjustments, and then as Mr. Butcher went over, there's also some changes and are proposed in some operational areas, and really, those efforts are designed to help us better improve or to address some health and safety issues that we have with brush and bulky items and how they're set out and how long they sit out, and we really want to try to be a, a little bit more aggressive in those areas and a little bit more proactive in those areas to try to address some of those health and safety concerns. And we also would like to try to do a little bit better job of providing consistent service to the, to the residents of the community. So, those are some of the motivations behind the operational changes and the other two factors that address the rate changes.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Blackburn. I, I think probably of any comments I've heard on the entire budget, emails that I've received have related to the, the brush pickup changes and, and certainly, I'm, I'm very much in favor of, of what we've done there. For five years, this council has tried to deal with a, a way to, to manage increasing costs for brush collection, and, and I think the very good service that's provided, and hopefully to, to provide that service consistently throughout the year. So, I think this is as good a effort as, as we've been able to put together and get a council to adopt, and, and so if the citizens will bear with us, let us work through this with them, I, I think this will become a very, very workable solution that will, will provide consistent, high-quality service, the, with predictability that the citizens can put out their, their brush at an appropriate time, and it'll be collected on schedule so that they won't see a degradation in service and it won't be an inconvenience. It's just a change, so.
Exactly right.
So, so, I want to thank staff for, for your work with us to help to develop this policy. I think it is a good policy. I think it's good for our citizens, and it helps us to help manage the cost of providing that service for, for the citizens of Temple, and, and so, thanks for, for all the efforts and, and the patience as we've worked through this over several years now, so. Counsel, any other comments or questions? There being none, entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution setting the collection charges for solid waste services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Prochatawala?
Aye.
Counselor Bouloud?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Item eight is to consider adopting a resolution amending the current utility systems fees to be effective October first of two thousand and six by A, increasing the current water rate monthly minimum service charge based on a meter size and increasing the volumetric rate, and B, increasing the current wastewater rate monthly minimum service charge and increasing the volumetric rate. Ms. Bernard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, counsel. Next slide, please, Ellen. As you recall, in this, previous in two thousand and three, we engaged RW Beck to assist with updating, from the beginning of, we'd had the original water cost of service and rate design model, and we asked that that be updated this spring, and as a result of that, it identified and calculated a revenue requirement that included increases related to operating expenses from our capital improvement and expenses related to our capital improvement plan, which that necessitated an increase in our water and wastewater rates to recover those costs. The increases related to our capital improvement plan, as David went over earlier, had to do with launching the two, twenty point seven million dollar improvement program for FY two thousand and seven, and part of the dollars that we had used in the past for pay-as-you-go monies, which was approximately three million dollars, we were able to leverage a portion of that to, for our debt service and still have one point two million to use as pay-as-you-go capital programs, which includes repairing line, water and wastewater lines. And then we also had operating cost increases of about one point one million related to fuel, utilities and chemicals associated with operating our wastewater collection and distrib, water distribution systems. From those, that study, the proposed water rates compared to the current rates increased a half, or five point nine percent for the base rate for the water, water, and then the volumetric rate increased eight point two percent from two sixty-nine, or two hundred, or a thousand gallons of usage to two point nine one. Our wastewater rates, where the minimum service charge currently was eight point, or eight dollars and fifty cents, increased that to nine dollars and fifty cents, which is nine point four percent. Our volumetric rate increased by nine point eight percent, and relating that rate adjustment to what it would impact the average customer with usage of ten, ten thousand gallons of water and six thousand gallons of wastewater would be a monthly cost of four dollars and fifty-four cents a month. And the commercial water and wastewater based on fifty thousand gallons would be eleven dollars and forty cents, forty-six cents a month for water and about eighteen dollars and fifty cents, fifty-six cents a month for wastewater. Just to compare our water rates and wastewater rates to the region and peer cities, where water rates, Temples, is below the median, well below the median, and where our wastewater rates were slightly, next slide, please, slightly above the median. That concludes my slides on the water wastewater rates. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Counsel, any questions that you have? Mr. Blackburn, would you make a comment about the increased pressure from the state regulatory agency on our replacement plan?
Sure.
Step up the pace there that's kind of precipitated some of this portion?
Be happy to do so. The, over the past several years, I think the city's been working diligently on developing a, a program and a process to address our infrastructure, especially our water and sewer system. There is a state agency, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TSEC, that is a regulatory arm of the state that has a lot of influence and a lot of regulatory authority with regard to our, our, our water and sewer systems. We had been working under the premise or under the hopes that a fifty-year replacement program would meet those regulatory requirements. Over the past several weeks and months, we've had discussions with TSEC. In fact, Mr. Butcher and I have made a trip up to TSEC offices in Waco and, and discussed with them what our approach and our plan was and confirmed two things. One was that the fifty-year approach was not a viable approach in the eyes of the state regulatory agency, and secondly, that the approach that is proposed tonight, that council has adopted with regard to your CIP item, which was the previous item on this agenda, were applauded by TSEC and were encouraged, and so that has certainly been one of the factors that we've been trying to use as motivation and a driving force as we look at our infrastructure and our facilities, and, and let me just say, along those lines, there, I mean, there are multiple factors involved in, in the CIP process, but there are, there were two main things, I think, that are driving the rate increases or rate adjustments for our water and sewer. One of those is just increased operating costs for the system, just like solid waste and just like other areas in our budget. Fuel, utility costs, those things are increasing, and that drives part of those rate increases, again, to continue to maintain the same service levels. But the other major driver, I think, is your CIP program, and it is, again, not based on a fifty-year plan any longer, it's based on a much shorter version of that, but that's also driving some of these rate adjustments because we have to address those in a more, in a little bit more expeditious manner, and the vast majority of, of the projects that are listed in your utility revenue bonds, over ninety percent of those projects are rehabilitation, reconstruction of existing system. That's also important to underline, I think, in our thought process when you're looking at your CIP, is that really what you're doing with these dollars is reinvesting into your current system and taking care of them. Hope that is satisfactory to you.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you for that explanation. I think it's important for, for citizens to know and understand a little bit about what's driving expenditures on, on water and sewer, all the way from the underground components to the water tanks that we have that TSEC requires us to renovate, and those are very costly and expensive projects as well, so, so certainly justifies the CIP expenditures that we have planned, so, thank you, sir, for that explanation. Third, any other further questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion for item eight, A and B together, if you wish.
Mayor, in one respect to what you just said, I think it, it also, I had gotten questions about why we were, why we weren't doing this all along, why can't we fund it out of the fund balance and all that, and so it's important that they do know that this is years and years and years of investment that has not been able to be made, and we are trying to catch up on getting compliance as well with the thing, so.
Yeah, and, and that stuff on the ground just keeps getting older, and
It does.
Some of it's in there for a long enough time, and it's just continues to fail seemingly faster and faster each and every year. It just deteriorates, and once it starts to go, it goes, and, and so, that's, that's accurate for me, so.
Mayor, just to add a, a quick footnote to that, and that's exactly correct, we have not necessarily a young system either, so your observation that it seems to be failing faster each year is accurate because the system is, has been in place for, for some time, so that's also been a factor in, in our process, too.
Hopefully, we can mitigate less emergencies and, and do more plan with this plan, so, thank you. Counsel, a motion on this item, if you please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve item eight for the resolution amending the current utility system fees for water and wastewater. Now, if there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Prochatawala?
Aye.
Counselor Bouloud?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. The last item on our agenda tonight is consider adopting a resolution authorizing a construction contract with InStar Services Group of Felton for building repairs and mold remediation at Fire Station Number Seven and for building repairs at Fire Stations Number Two and Number Four. Mr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor. As counsel is aware, on May fifteenth, we received some concerns from firefighters located in Station Seven about possible mold issues at that station. We conducted air tests within the building, and it was determined mold was present in that facility. We then declared an official emergency under the requirements of state law to access the building for mold damage, determine the repairs required. We hired two outside firms, TLI Inc. and Eclipse Environmental and Engineering Inc. to evaluate the facility and develop a report, including recommendations for actions and repairs that we should take. During this period, as, again, as you're aware, we relocated the firefighters, police officers from the building for their safety. We've actually had two stages in that relocation. The current stage puts those firefighters back onto Station Seven location, but in a modular unit there so we can deploy from that, and that hopefully helps us maintain our response time to that area, but they are still outside of the station in terms of their sleeping arrangements and quarters. Also, because Fire Station Seven was constructed at the same time as Fire Stations Two and Four, we had staff, I want to say thank you to Chuck Rann, Richard Carey, O. Gerald Irvin, also to evaluate those stations, to also determine if we should do any, take any actions with regard to those stations. One of the directives I issued to staff was to try and, as best we can, capsulize this entire issue into one action that we needed to take so that we could move forward and resolve the issues. What you have before you tonight is a resolution asking for a consideration to enter into a construction contract with InStar Services, not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand to remediate the mold problems at Fire Station Seven and to do some building repairs at Fire Stations Seven, Two and Four. The estimated construction cost for Station Seven, or reconstruction cost, are about a hundred and thirty-four thousand. That work includes several areas, and I want to mention this just briefly, the action plan, the documents that we received, and, and all of these are, are public documents, but the, the documents that we received from the consultants were fairly detailed, fairly thick documents in terms of the response, or the report and the recommendations that they made. When we received those reports, I'd asked staff to then step back and develop an action plan, review all of this and sequence what we should do in response to each and every one of the recommendations that the reports brought back. What you should also have is an action plan for remediation and construction. That action plan identified some, I think it was about fifty-two recommendations total in the reports that we received back for the station. The action plan addresses all fifty-two areas of the recommendations. The action plan covers really what I would consider maybe three general areas. The first area is remediation of mold and moisture in affected areas of materials, and that may mean removal of those areas, so that's just simply identifying where it is, whether it's in the walls, the ceiling. is, whether it's in the walls, the ceiling, uh, bathroom, wherever, and then removing it, that's one component of the, uh, action plan. Another component is inspections and remediation in multiple areas to include our HVA systems, our bath and shower, the roof areas, all of those kinds of areas. That may be more, uh, there are components of those recommendations that are inspections or monitoring, in other words, we'll take a look at those areas, if we need to replace, then we'll replace, if we need to pull out, we pull out, but we may not necessarily have to do that, and that's consistent with the recommendations in the report. The other area that I would categorize in a general way is, uh, exterior evaluation and remediation if necessary, in other words, around the foundation area, uh, the landscaping, the, I mean, just anything around the facility that may have contributed to the moisture that contributed to the mold, so that we can address that. Those are kind of the three general areas in the fifty-plus areas of specific recommendations, and again, I want to emphasize that we looked at each and every one of those, uh, recommendations, and we're gonna address each and every one of them in the action plan. The action plan suggests, uh, that it will take approximately about sixty days, uh, to complete this work, and, uh, the cost, I think we're estimating not to exceed around a hundred and ninety thousand, and stations two and four are also included in the action plan and the recommendations, and, uh, be happy to address any questions that you might have relative to this issue.
There's no recourse on builder?
Um, we have examined, uh, that, I mean, that was part of the discussions that staff had, uh, with, uh, legal counsel, uh, about, uh, other parties, uh, that we might, uh, engage, I think we're having, uh, we are gonna have some discussions with, uh, a third party, and we also notified our insurance carrier, uh, for coverage issues related to that, but we're certainly going to pursue any and every, any and every available avenue that we can.
Other questions? There being none, entertain a motion for approval of this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on this item for remediation and resolution amending the current utility, uh, excuse me, wrong line, authorizing a construction contract with InStar Services Group of Pelton. No further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 Hi. Let me add a word of thanks, uh, as Ms. Tyrock did, to the staff, uh, for your work on the budget and the CIP, I think it was an excellent process this year, I, uh, I got a great deal from it, I, I think, uh, I'd also, like, I don't think, I do want to add my word of thanks to the council for, for your work, I think the, the work we've done on the strategic plan over the last couple of years makes this budget process a, an easier process, uh, to go through, and, uh, I think it, it highlights the importance of a strategic plan, and I thank you for your work on that, and your work on this budget, and, uh, I think it's a great, a good budget for this year for us, and, and the project list, the CIP project list is an excellent project list to, to carry this city forward, uh, and take advantage of the great opportunities we have in our city going on today. Thank you all very much, any other comments, anyone who's submitted this time?
Um, I would just like to bring to attention, um, obviously, Monday is a holiday, in District Three, we are having a coyote problem, we know for sure we have one, I've heard two howling, um, several cats are coming up missing in District Three, which is the south side, lots of activities this weekend, um, they're, apparently this coyote, one or two, are running that creek, there's a, a creek that goes behind several homes, and so I just wanna have kind of a heightened awareness that we do have a coyote problem on the south side of town, that, you know, I will say that animal control is very much aware of, the neighbors are aware of, the newspaper's aware of, so I just want everyone to be aware that we council members know that there's a problem over there, and we're trying to get it addressed, so, because I don't, I, I hate to see the pets come up missing, but also I don't wanna see a child come up missing.
Can you be more specific on that creek?
The creek is on Forest Trail that runs down behind Charlie Volter's house, I will say right there, um, they've been seen really off of Marlin Wood, um, it's on Marlin Wood, that, there's a creek off Forest Trail there.
Do you zoom in on the creek?
I don't know the name of that creek. Tyrock Creek, yeah.
Tyrock Creek.
So I just, it is a, I, I'm very concerned, um, the other morning, about three-thirty, my own pet just went crazy in my house, and I went out in the backyard, and you could hear the coyote, one or two, possibly two, howling, and so I just, I, this is just a notice of everybody be aware, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance, thank you for your participation and work throughout the budget cycle, we are adjourned.